Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is our second time doing it via Facebook Live and being remote at our desks in our homes. This is Tuesday, April 7th, 2020. We are here for our City Commission meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
America.
And to the Republican Party, which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Still feels odd standing up and doing it on our own. At this time, I'm going to go on to proclamations.
Mayor?
I'm going to have our city clerk Brenda Wolf read the two proclamations we have. One is for to celebrate Diversity Month, and the second one is for the Fair Housing Month. Brenda?
Mayor, before we do that, we're going to have Brenda call the roll.
Oh, sure.
Mayor Ready?
Present.
Commissioner Butler?
Present.
Commissioner Morse?
Present.
Commissioner Haddasal?
Present.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now you can read the proclamations, Brenda. Thank you.
Whereas the City of Manhattan is a city that welcomes and celebrates people of all races, ethnicities, religions, genders, sexual orientations, physical and mental circumstances, and economic status, the City of Manhattan strives to cultivate our diversity and believes it enhances the quality of life in our community. The City of Manhattan employees formed a Diversity and Inclusion Committee in 2018 as a group of diverse individuals from across the city, serving as a voice for employees to advocate for an inclusive and equitable work environment where every employee feels valued and safe. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee works in concert with the Organizational Excellence Initiative to build morale and invest in employees. The City of Manhattan implemented the OEI with the goal of becoming an employer of choice. The City of Manhattan aspires to be an organization where employees use their unique experiences and backgrounds, where ideas are heard, and where we advance a culture of inclusion daily. The residents of Manhattan are urged to expand community outreach, engagement, and authentic collaboration that will empower each Manhattan resident with the ability and desire to help create a society that condemns racism, misogyny, intolerance, discrimination, or oppression towards any person. Now therefore, I, Usher Ready, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, call upon all citizens of Manhattan, Kansas, to hereby proclaim April as Celebrate Diversity Month for the City of Manhattan and commit to support, participate, and help expand inclusive conversations in support of a community that is free of oppression, persecution, and hate. I have comments that were submitted by the Diversity and Inclusion Committee I'd like to read. They'd like for me to state their mission statement. We are a group of diverse individuals from across the city, serving as a voice for employees to advocate for an inclusive and equitable work environment where every employee feels valued and safe. They'd also like for me to mention their vision statement. We aspire to be an organization where employees use their unique experiences and backgrounds, where ideas are heard, and where we advance a culture of inclusion daily to meet the needs of our employees and community. Our vision is for individuals to feel a deep sense of belonging, purpose, and value. The next proclamation is for Fair Housing Month. Whereas the City of Manhattan is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. The fair housing groups and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination and found too many that have proved upon investigation to be violations of the fair housing laws. Equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our city that can and should be achieved. Now therefore, I, Usher Ready, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, on behalf of its citizens, proclaim the month of April 2020 as Fair Housing Month and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the city. Margaret Pendleton, Association Executive from Flahell's Association of Realtors, has provided comments for me to read. Each April, Realtors observe the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. As stewards of the right to own, use, and transfer private property, fair housing protects our livelihood and business as Realtors and depends on a free, open market that embraces equal opportunity. Members of the Flahell's Association of Realtors recognize the significance of the Fair Housing Act and reconfirm their commitment to upholding fair housing law as well as their commitment to offering equal professional service to all in their search for real property. And that concludes the proclamations.
Thank you. And I appreciate the submissions of the comments on those as well for the proclamations. I know it's a new process, but I think we are adapting pretty well. Onto public comments. So currently, we don't take in-person public comments from the general public for the time being. Instead, the public was allowed to submit public comments through the city's website as well as contacting one of our city commissioners until 5:00 PM today, or by emailing or calling, like I said, the city commissioners directly. So there were no general public comments for this evening. So we'll move forward with the rest of the agenda. Are there any commissioner comments? Mark?
Commissioner Haddasal here. I was just want to remind people, as more and more people out on the trails around town, there is a law about letting your dog loose when you're on the trail. And with all the extra families that are out there, small children, children in strollers, even though your dog has always been a good boy or girl, it is against the law to let your dog run free out there in public. And it's also because I've heard a couple of complaints that that's happening. And so for everybody's safety, that's why those were passed. People need to make sure they keep their dog on a leash and away from people and other dogs. And also, it's common courtesy to clean up after your animal, and there's always a few people that don't do that. So please make an effort, for those of you who aren't, to make the trails safe and clean and usable for everybody. Thanks.
Yes, Aaron?
It was me.
Aaron's on.
Linda Morse. And I would just like to say how much I appreciate your two proclamations about, one, fair housing and the other, diversity. And, you know, this is a trying time for everyone, all of us, who are limiting our time away from home for this virus. And we need to stop and think and check ourselves and always be considerate of the language we're using and not be irritable. And do the best we can to just be calm and stay even with the world. I, it's easy to get depressed if you're at home. It's easy to be irritable with the guy that goes down your street 50 miles an hour with a big muffler. It's easy to look at other people and say, "They're not supposed to be doing that." And so we just need to temper our thinking, kind of like Christmas. So we are on our good behavior these days. So I would just encourage us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, did you have something to say? I thought I'd.
Yeah. Yeah. I just wanted to offer some comments on the, I serve as our liaison from the city on the Adibus ADA Public Transportation Board. And ridership's obviously down, but I also wanted people to know that the routes are still running. They're running, if you need, they're running on a slightly different schedule. It's what the typical Saturday schedule looks like. So if you need to look at those routes and find those times, you can get on the website and look at that. But also, there's been concerns, why are the buses running, what's happening? And what we learned today, and I know that the EOC has been in touch with Ann at Adibus, and they're doing a very, very good job at keeping those buses sanitized, secure. They're using what is referred to as electrostatic cleaning in addition to wiping down the high-traffic areas. And then, of course, they're abiding by the 10-person rule for the bus itself, and they're trying to institute distancing while on the bus. And part of that is, no one can sit in that front row to give that driver space, but also they're distancing within the bus. I just wanted to emphasize that that is a critical service for people that need to use it, that need to get to essential jobs. That might be your grocery store worker that is serving you the food, needs to ride the bus to get there. That could be a lot of different employers that are serving our community, have employees riding the bus, and that is essential. So we can't forget about that. But I just also wanted to give a shout out to the staff and the crew at Adibus. They're doing a remarkable job of keeping those buses safe and secure for people.
Thanks, Aaron. When, did you have any public comments?
No, nothing to share.
Thank you. Ron, I think I'm going to have you speak to what the EOC has been up to, as well as what we are discussing with the MHK Clinical Task Force and the county and the city as far as an alternative space. Could you say a few words about that?
Sure, Mayor. Happy to do that. The Unified Command and the EOC meets essentially daily. The EOC itself, which is our local emergency service peoples and other support personnel, meets regionally as well with our other similar positions from Potawatomi and also Gary County and Fort Riley, and also has some K-State representatives on that particular task force. So we review different aspects of the ongoing circumstances in the community and develop procedures and programs to deal with that. We have coordination with the State Department of Emergency Management to try and coordinate and delivery of supplies and any types of equipment requests that we can try and obtain for folks, as well as close contact with the medical community. As such, we've been working with the MHK Critical Task Force over the past few days to create what's known as a critical, or excuse me, an alternative care site, or an ACS. And we've been working with the Four Points by Sheraton mainly because of the number of ground-level rooms that it has and the number of entrances that it could also be accessed in some of the other facilities this has. And there's four primary reasons that the Medical Task Force would like us to pursue this facility. And one is as a skilled nursing facility for the elderly. So essentially, if you've got a resident at one of our existing nursing homes or retirement care centers that has a need to be hospitalized, their desire is not to bring that individual back from the hospital to the nursing home unless they are absolutely sure that they are not COVID-positive or being exposed to the virus. So this facility would serve as a location where they could go for rehab and make sure that they are well to either go back to that facility, a nursing facility, or back to their apartment if they came from a, a lot of times if an elderly person has fallen or something in their home and injured and have to be hospitalized, they'll typically go to a rehab center until they're well enough to return home. So this would serve as that facility, and the nursing homes would provide the staffing and equipment necessary to be able to provide that service in this facility. Other aspects of that would be for people that need a place to go after they've been discharged from the hospital. So if you're even, if you're COVID-positive and you've made it over the hump, if you will, for your treatment process, but, and so you're no longer, your condition is improving, you're no longer required to be positive or to be treated at the hospital, but you still might be contagious. If you don't have a home to go to, or you don't want to go home to expose other folks that are there, this would be an alternative facility for you to be able to go to until you've been able to run that quarantine period and do recovery in that particular location. These could also serve as, for patients who are, who their doctor has ordered to be isolated but does not need to be hospitalized, and they don't have another facility in which to go to. It's also an opportunity to provide rooms for medical service workers as well as first responders, so that if they were exposed, they could be quarantined with at this facility so they wouldn't have to go home and provide exposure to their family. And then finally, it could be a centralized respiratory clinic to provide some respiratory care services as well as screening and swabbing that could run for testing. So those are the four primary components that the medical community would like to establish for this facility. We're currently in negotiations with the Four Points. The County Commission has approved moving forward with this, and I know the Commission is supportive of this as well because I've had good communication with them. And so we have received some funds, or will receive some funds, from Community Development Block Grant Program that are emergency-related to the COVID virus issue, and they would be eligible to help with some of these expenses. So we'll talk about some of those later when we get on to the CDBG item. Elsewhere, as far as city operations are concerned, we are, all our facilities are officially closed through April 19th. We anticipate that that date will likely be extended, as many of the stay-at-home and other emergency orders will, as April's intended to be. Kansas isn't expected to see its peak exposures until the end of the month. We've been lagging a little bit behind the state, and so we think ours will certainly probably move into May somewhat. Our Public Works and Utilities crews have been working on a lot of regular tasks, street repairs and maintenance, utility line breaks, that sort of thing, for helping and assisting with that type of work with contractors that need those services. We've been splitting those crews so we avoid as much of contact as possible. We also have done that with our water and wastewater plant operators so we can assure some continuity of operations for those services. Our park crews have begun mowing and doing trash pickup, and also they have been splitting their crews as well. And the forestry and street crews, this past couple of weeks, have been performing spring cleanup. We felt like that was an activity that we could go ahead and do, and with the transfer station being closed, we have access to that. And so they're finishing that up this week on the west side of town, and we've had to change our operations there, one person per truck and a couple of trucks per site. So it's taken us, we usually spend about a week doing that. We're going to end up spending about two weeks, and people are certainly taking advantage of that, which we're appreciative of and appreciate the interest. We have lots of folks that are working from home. Nearly all our phones are forwarded to folks that are working from home, and they're answering those calls. We do have key staff that are reporting to the building and working to perform various functions. We're still paying bills. We have payroll to process, other contracts, and similar-type activities. Our fire departments are also segregated for the work crews that we're doing there, as well as administration. Our code enforcement and risk reduction services are also working from home and working by appointment to do inspections as needed, and appointments are being made and applications submitted for plan review, et cetera. Our airport is still have one or two flights a day, and that varies by day. And so we still have a building and security to keep open there and other maintenance tasks that are provided by the airport. And so that's just a few of those operations. Municipal court is still functioning. Again, a lot of the dockets have been moved, but the staff are communicating with folks to provide the services that folks need. So a lot's still going on with our city operations, other than our buildings are closed.
Thanks, Ron. I think, you know, we typically have a 5:30 briefing, and so this is for us to also catch up on things. But the city is also doing as much as they can under the constraints that we have. So we're still going to move forward with several of the projects. I just wanted to give a few updates. Last week, we had approved a partnership with the Manhattan Chamber for some funding for our small businesses, for small business loans. And just to give a quick update from Jason Smith, President and CEO of our Manhattan City Chamber, he said, "I want to let you know that we had 48 applications for assistance under the Emergency Assistance Program we established last week. The Loan Committee will review 48 applications from the small businesses tomorrow morning, and if approved, we hope to have them funded this week." And they still have about $200,000 for future requests as well. So if you are a small business, any size, you do not have to be a Chamber member, please go to the website on the Chamber, as well as our city websites, and apply. And let's see if you are eligible. If not, they will also provide you a path to something you might be eligible for. Take advantage of this opportunity. We want to make sure we are a vibrant, thriving business community once again. There isn't a deadline on this, so I certainly want you to take advantage of it while it's still here. We heard about the Manhattan Clinical Task Force. They have some medical needs, such as the N95 masks, isolation gowns, surgical masks and such. They don't, they don't want you just dropping it off any old place. Please call 785-587-5462, and they will give you a drop-off place. These have to be new, not opened, and have to be still in their package when they receive them. Face masks, the CDC has now said that everybody should wear a face mask, a regular cloth face mask, any kind of face mask, face mask when you're going out, whether you're shopping or whether you're going to be mingling with anybody, just so that you, whatever droplets or, you know, whatever, when we speak, things happen. So just to make sure that we're not imposing onto somebody else anything we might be carrying within ourselves. So just be cautious. It's not a requirement by any means, but it's highly suggested that you wear some kind of a mask, and also to clean them, you know, wash them, don't wear the same one over and over again. We don't want anybody else getting any diseases either. That's recommended for anybody if you're going grocery shopping, whatever it might be. The Census 2020 is still up, so make sure you get on the website, if you didn't already get something in the mail, and take, do the census. We already filled out ours. This is very critical to our infrastructure needs, community needs, USD 383 school needs. All of that is based right now on our 2010 census, and we need the 2020 census to be accurate as well. Funding sources for the, whether it's Adibus or anything we're talking about is going to depend on our population at this point. I know a lot of people have had to move and do different things because of the, because of COVID-19, but it depends on where you were located and residing as of April 1st. So that's going to be your key spot. If you were a student and had to leave, would you have been here on April 1st going to Kansas State University? Then that is your residence. So make sure you do that and take some time to fill that out. Other than that, I think the community is doing really well with all the guidelines that have been set forth. And Easter is this weekend, so a lot of people may go to church, and I think the governor put out a guideline of 10 members. I don't know how a church facilitates 10 members, but just be cognizant of that and that we are still under a stay-at-home order, but at the same time, you know, as you practice your religion, to be aware of the social distancing practices as well this time. Okay. With that said, that's it on my end. Any other comments? We'll go on to the Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. I do have a request, and I, you know, does the commission have any questions or comments for any of the Consent Agenda items?
Mayor?
Yes?
On page two of the March 31st minutes, the first paragraph, it has to do, the topic is the temporary city operation changes due to the pandemic. At the end of the paragraph, it says, "On a roll-call vote, motion carries 4 to 1 with Commissioner," and I would like to have Morse inserted there, "voting against."
Okay. The name was missing?
Yeah. Thank you.
And so there will not be any in-person public comments for the Consent Agenda for the time being. Instead, the public was allowed to submit public comments through the city's website until 5:00 PM today, or by emailing or calling the city commissioners directly. There were no public comments received in any form regarding the Consent Agenda items on the website. I will say, on item K, I would like to move that to the general agenda, and as opposed to being at the end of the general agenda, to be the first topic on the general agenda so that we can move forward with that discussion and then go on to the second, the original agenda item for the CDBG.
For the benefit, for the benefit of the public, what is the topic for item K?
So item K is about the farmer's market, their proposal or request to have the, for, to give permit. The city gives a permit to start on April 18th, and that's going to be the discussion piece. And there was some comment on that from the public, as well as from the applicant. So we, I would like to move that to the general agenda, first item on the general agenda. Other than that, are there other commissioner comments regarding the Consent Agenda? Okay. Seeing none, would, and someone like to make motion?
Mayor, I, I move that we approve the, I don't have the script, of the Consent Agenda as distributed minus item K. That has been moved to the general agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Brenda, please call the roll.
Mayor Morse? I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor Ready?
Brenda?
Mayor Ready?
Oh.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Haddasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. So on the general agenda, I had the item, the agreement with downtown farmer's market, with downtown farmer's market Manhattan Incorporated. We moved to the general agenda to have some more discussion about this agenda item. Typically, I would be okay with approving it. I'm a strong proponent of the farmer's market and visit it often. At this time, I would like to, like to have the City Commission consider postponing, as opposed to starting on April 18th, postponing it to a month or two later, mainly because we are still under the we are still under the stay home until the governor's April 19th. And we also have now been designated as a community spread in our community. I think, you know, we haven't hit our peak yet, as was also mentioned, and we're going to hit our peak maybe in late April or early May. And as it is, I think the grocery stores are already having a hard time managing how many people are in their grocery stores and maintaining that six feet of social distancing and points of contact anytime you buy an item and all of, all of the things that go into a farmer's market. I have had conversations with Julie Gibbs, Vicky James, Debbie Ness, Andrea De Jesus, who's also online and will speak to this as well. So these are just some of my considerations. I know they have made lots of accommodations and I understand the need for the food and security items of individuals in our community as well. And I would like to look at a different format to get food to them. But at the same time, we have done very well as a community to stay on message about social distancing and people have adjusted to that, but they're also very eager to go out. So my fear is that if we go ahead and approve this and it comes out on April, the middle of April, people will go and with really good intentions, but as you know, it's hard to manage even when you go for a walk on a trail sometimes, how many people are out there these days. So I just want us to consider moving the line, the start date for the farmer's market to either middle or late May, if not even June. But I will let the applicant also speak to this issue at this time. Andrea, do you want to add a few words?
Yes, this is Andrea De Jesus. I'm president of the farmer's markets and I didn't know if they could bring up the information I submitted, the word documents.
Can you bring that up?
Did all the commissioners read that or have that or?
We have the packet. I, I don't know if everybody's read it, but I have read the packet and the email that you sent out later today, earlier today.
Okay.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, this is the map. This is one document, yes, and we can go over this first. One of the things that we have done is changed the layout of our market so that there is no vendor next to another vendor. Spacing wise, there would be at least 16 feet in between each vendor. And we also are looking at making our walkways wider so that there is plenty of room for customers to walk and not be within six feet of another customer. We will be doing chalk layouts on the concrete so that customers can see the six-foot social distancing as well. And we are also implementing a one-way walking, so it's as if you're driving on a road, you walk on the right-hand side in that direction only. We have also limited it to only be essential producers only. So it will be food producers and we are already actually getting ahead of the ball and planned to go live to the public tomorrow because we are changing the market. This is not going to be a social gathering. This is not going to be a come out and talk to your neighbor. This is going to be safer and better than a grocery store is right now. It is you come, you shop, you leave. And we are doing many, many things to make it as safe as possible. The stall layouts are just one of those. We also will have the hand sanitizer, gloves, hand washing stations. We will implement a senior hour or high-risk hour at the beginning of the market. We are asking if you're, if you're sick, do not come to the market, whether you be a vendor or a customer. We are looking at doing simple things such as rounding pricing to whole dollars so that we can avoid coin transactions. We will have two producers at a booth if possible. One will handle the food, one will handle the money. If not, they will be expected to wash their hands in between, in between the transactions. Essential producers will only be bringing their required staff. They are not bringing extra family members. They will not be viewing it as a social, a social event as well. We will not be allowing any sampling and I myself will be walking around the markets to help with this as well and to implement it. Some of the things that we're going to ask of our customers is they are not allowed to touch any products. It will be a vendor or producer only touching the products. So this is one of the ways we feel will be safer than the farmer's mark, or excuse me, safer than the grocery store. I don't have to worry about who touched that head of lettuce before I purchased it. It will be a farmer only touched it before it goes to the consumer. We are going to request that customers only have one member from their family come. It's not going to be a social setting. It will be arrive, shop, purchase and go home. We are asking them to have a list of head of time and the market will be promoting which vendors will be at the market on Friday, so they will have an idea of which vendors will be there and what products they will have. We are not going to allow any pets at the markets. As I mentioned earlier, we were going to have one-way traffic in the market and we are asking everyone to wear masks as well. And that is also covered in the other documents that I sent. You want to bring that up?
Jason, can we see that other document if possible?
We're going to bring that up right now.
All right, thank you.
And I want to emphasize, this is going to be essential producers providing an essential product. We are providing an essential product to the public. We are just like a grocery store, except that we are outdoors, which I feel is even safer. We have the, the open-air concept that the grocery store does not have as well. We aren't going to be funneling everybody through one or two checkout counters. We will have the vendors, each vendor themselves. Many vendors already accept credit cards and are adding that. They are removing the signature function from their program. Some vendors are doing online sales and will have pickup as well, but many of my vendors do not have that option. They are small enough, they don't have a website, they don't have the capability to do that. Another thing that some vendors are doing is they're going to be placing an empty table in front of the customer and in between, in between the customer and the product so that there's additional space and they're not directly breathing on the products as well. The board has been discussing this multiple times. It is not something that we have taken lightly. We know that we have to get out in front of this and teach our customers that we are changing for this situation. As I said earlier, it will not be a social market. It will be a come shop and go home. And we feel that we are, we are essential. We know we are essential. We have been put on the list of essential. We are serving essential products to our consumers. We have the support of the Kansas Department of Agriculture behind us and they view it as marketing outlets that are an important distribution outlet for our specialty crop growers. I've been working with the state extension food safety specialists and many more people on getting this set up and doing it correctly and being as safe as possible.
Thank you Andrea. And, you know, just to add a few additional comments to this, when I talk to the community members and as well as Julie Gibbs and Andrea, Vicky James, all of these folks, strong proponents of public health and meeting the needs in our community. So this is an extremely difficult decision that we are discussing this evening. And for me, it is, you know, like I said, a tough decision, but I truly feel we need to postpone this. But once again, they are putting in a lot of measures. I, I think one of the people that I spoke to said that even the produce was going to be packaged and whatever you, you know, just like Andrea was saying, you, whatever you pick, you can't put back. But there were also, we were also discussing other items, a delivery mechanism where something like Harvesters does, maybe put certain items in a box and people can say, "This box is $10 and this is what it has and this is 20 and this is what it has." And you buy whatever's in that box and you leave from your car, a delivery or an online thing of some sort, but a different way, a different delivery mechanism to get food to the people that need it the most. I don't have all the solutions to that and I understand that some of our farmers live in a surrounding area. They don't live right around here where you can just give a loaf of bread and put it in a box for everybody. So there are different challenges in how to get food to people, especially individuals and families that are on a SNAP program and we want to make sure they are receiving food as well. So those are items that we can still discuss with the Farmer's Market Association as well as we move forward. But I will, you know, open it up for discussion with the other commissioners at this point.
This is Jason.
Mayor, this is Aaron. I have a question for Andrea. And just kind of overall, my, I'm pretty supportive of this moving forward, but in the sense of fairness, because we are, we do have a, we do allow, the state is allowing grocery stores to remain open and they're, they're determined to be essential, just as this, this email that was on the screen momentarily outlines. What I am wondering is what, what, Andrea, you had mentioned this, it's going to be your job to kind of regulate, so to speak. And one thing that Kroger and Walmart and these other box stores are doing is, you know, they're kind of, the way that they've come to their conclusion, not just the six feet rule, but how many people in the, is based on square footage. I, I quickly ran the square footage. It looks to be like based on what their formulas are, you could have about 70 people, including your vendors, in that square area before it becomes overcrowded. Is that something you've discussed or how, how about people like, if there is a limit on how many people you're going to allow in at once, then you got to consider that lining up, right? Have them staggered six feet. If those are all things that you've thought about or are willing to accommodate, I have no problem moving forward with this. I don't think we need to stop or pull the permit. This is usually the, the people that are dealing with, in the farmer's market, I happen to live across the street, so I see them and often are very, they know what they're doing when it comes to safety and food and they are, like you said, in many ways doing things better even than the grocery stores when it comes to that and especially with this list of preparations that they've already agreed to do.
Yes, one of the things that I would like to mention is we have looked at that, how we're going to do that. Right now, if we open now, we have less essential producers than we will in a month. There is product that is ready that's locally grown here, but not everybody has product yet. And by starting now, our demand is going to be less, our producers are going to be less, so we can control it better. And then as we gradually add more vendors with more product to sell, we, allows us to grow and we can handle that versus if we wait a month, we're going to have many, many more people wanting to have the demand to show up and then we'll have more producers. Getting this going now allows us to start smaller. If we need to limit people in and out, we will. There, the parking lot is a lot bigger than we actually use and I am not against going and speaking with the mall and saying, "Can we use the whole parking lot to spread out more and park in the other area?" Since the mall's not open, there is more parking available. I'm not against that. I'm, I'm wanting to work with everyone to make this work on that aspect. And one of the comments was the different, different delivery methods was as an option and doing online purchasing. With the SNAP EBT, you cannot do online purchasing. You have to run the card onsite. So for consumers that are doing the online stores, that's not an option right now and that's going to limit many of our consumers as well. And with those programs, we have the doubling dollars that makes your dollar spread, gives them access to local foods as well. And some of the programs are specific to farmer's markets. If we take the, take the farmer's market away, we will not have, they will not have that option.
And on that real quick, can, can you, that doubling up for SNAP for the food stamp benefits, that's only specific to farmer's market? That's a Kansas program, right?
It is not necessarily a Kansas program. It's done at multiple markets across the nation, but it is, yes, you cannot go to the grocery store and double your SNAP benefits. That is done at our farmer's markets and other markets in the area. And we actually have funds to triple those dollars, which I think will be highly utilized this year. There is also senior coupons that are given out to low-income seniors and they bring those to the farmer's market. They are only valid at the farmer's market and we double those dollars as well. And in the past, last year, we worked with the Riley County Health Department, the WIC office and provided them additional funds to come to the farmer's market and those can only be spent at the farmer's market.
Thank you. That answers my questions. I don't have any other comments other than this seems to be a well, well thought, thought out process and the fact that it would hurt the most vulnerable more than, and what we're, what we have, we don't have a plan necessarily that's better to distribute food to those that are most vulnerable. This seems like the, an ideal circumstance for them to be able to double or triple people that are using the SNAP benefits in a safe way and also help the local consumers and producers that are going to be providing there. So that's all I have to say. I'll be supporting, keeping it going.
Other comments?
This is Linda Morse. I, I have every sympathy with the desire of vendors and the, and the public probably, but I, I just have to act in caution. The coronavirus is expected to peak in Kansas by April 27th and peak at, in Manhattan by May 7th. And that's exactly the period of time we're talking about with this opening on April 18th, this, a discussion. The, I, I feel obliged, I, to recognize that our Riley County Health Department Director has changed or has recommended that it not open until May 18th. And I think that's a wise course of action. The governor today said that she originally did not want to limit churches and, I was in her other, the other one group in her order today, but pardon?
Funerals.
Funerals. But that because the 25% of the virus cases that have been discovered in the last week or two were emanating from funerals and church services and that's why she had to take this action. So I think we err on the side of caution. We're not going to be opening our pools even on Memorial Day probably because of this. We, we just cannot, this is not something where we dash off into the sunset and our heroes. We have to be heroes by exercising caution. And I would support the May 18th opening and it's possible depending on how bad things get. If we have to use that facility at the Four Points, we may not be opening on May, on May 18th either. It just depends on how this goes. That's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you Linda. Other comments from commissioners?
This is Win Butler. I'm, I'm supportive of going ahead with it as outlined and, and I take a bit of a different approach. Maybe I'm a bit more optimistic, but, but I know that, you know, right now, there's only one tool apparently in the toolbox and that's lock everybody up. And to me, that doesn't make sense. I'm more of a risk assessment guy. I think every single business has got to go through a risk assessment process. How can they open, keep the economy going, but also address the health? And the plan that was laid out here tonight clearly does that. And one size doesn't fit all and it makes no sense. And we have liquor stores open, you know, they're essential. We, we have supermarkets open, we have Target open, we have, we have more things open than are closed. And so it's almost like, you know, we're going out of our way to make things difficult for certain businesses that are doing a proper risk assessment. And then each individual's got to do their own too. And like I'm up there in that high-risk category, I'm considered an old guy, I guess, at this point. So maybe I shouldn't go to the farmer's market if I don't actually need a head of lettuce, you know? So maybe I shouldn't go to the farmer's market if I don't actually need a head of lettuce, you know? I can make that choice. You know, I've gone to the supermarket. I actually wore a mask and gloves. You know, my wife's an RM for 40 years, you know, she trained me on how to put it on properly and take it off properly. So I didn't goof it up. But, but I think each business has got to have its own risk assessment. And then you as an individual, once you know that, you know, they published it, said, if you go to the farmer's market, here's what we're doing to make you safe. You choose to go, okay, you're making a personal risk assessment. But I don't feel it's correct for, you know, government officials to make a broad risk assessment and just basically wave the wand on everybody out there. That's just not, uh, what, what America's all about. And I know that's tough because to me, there's three things going on here. Uh, I've always, I've always viewed this, uh, pandemic as, as like a trident. And it has three prongs on it. And the longest one is that health one, very dangerous. You know, and people, people have to understand that. You've got to always be concerned about the health. But you've also got a panic piece and you've got the economy. And we cannot shut down the economy for six months and survive as a nation. We can't do it. So we've got to start looking at, you know, all of the data and simultaneously address the health, the economy and tamper down, uh, some of the panic out there. So I, I'm going to vote to, to support this.
Mark, thank you, Win.
Yeah, I, um, I echo a lot of the stuff that Win had to say, that, that, you know, they, because of the steps they're taking to protect everybody, that, that helps. Um, and I just, I just don't like the way the state's kind of picking and choosing who, who gets to stay open and who doesn't and such. And, and so the, I don't know how much different dillards and pennies would be than Target, other than you don't have food there, but you're going to keep people farther away. And, and so, yeah, people have to decide if it's, if they, if it's too much of a risk, then don't go to the farmer's market for yourself and send somebody else or, or just wait it out. But, um, I would like to get more things open faster. Um, simply because it's, it's killing a lot of small businesses and a little bit of money that the city and state and the feds might eventually get to people. I think it's still going to be too late. So, um, I'll support the opening, but go at your own risk and, uh, wear a mask and do all those good things. But, uh, we really gotta seriously look as soon as possible about trying to get more of these businesses back open because everybody who's saying, keep everything closed is, their paycheck hasn't been affected by, by all these closures. And that's, that's the thing that's kind of, uh, the thing that stuck sticks in my craw is the fact that the people that are being affected the most don't seem to be having much of a say in all of this. But I'll, I'll support it and I'll support it starting on the 18th, but it's, uh, keep the things in place and monitor everything. And then hopefully they're right about peaking sooner rather than later.
Yusha, I would, uh, Yusha, I would just add one thing. I happen to be reviewing the mission statement for the City of Manhattan. And the sentence says, "The mission of the city is to sustain order and protect public safety, promote public health, preserve, uh, preserves the built and natural environment and enhance economic vitality." The, the public to sustain order and protect public safety and promote health are the priorities. Uh, I mean, the economy will come back. We know that. And, um, but we may, we would want to be alive when this is over. And people are dying. So I'm, I would just make that point. Thank you.
And, and 98% of the people are recovering and they're fine. 98% of the people who lose their jobs and their businesses are not going to be fine in three or four weeks. And that's my only point there. I'll stop.
No.
And I'll, I'll say real quick, I said I wouldn't say anything. I lied. I have to say something. Sorry. Um, the, the, uh, I don't, this isn't an economy argument for me. This is the, what Commissioner Butler talked about was panic and some of the panic resulted in hoarding, which also resulted in people that have, have the, and they're not capable of hoarding because they don't have those cash reserves. They're living paycheck to paycheck, but they have SNAP benefits. And this is an opportunity to double those SNAP benefits, potentially triple those SNAP benefits, get young people with families that are on food assistance to, to stock up. And it's healthy, fresh food. This isn't comparing, uh, a clothing store that we should or shouldn't open. This is about food. And that's the only reason I'm, I, we're having this discussion because it's essential. And it also gives those people that are the most vulnerable, the opportunity to, for their dollar to go three times as far.
Okay. Any other comments? Andrea, would you like to comment once more on, on any of this, uh, on the, um, on what you just heard?
Yes, um, I would also like to add to that this isn't, isn't an economy thing. Many of my produce vendors and farmers, this, this is their paycheck and they don't have another outlet. Um, and they can't make their produce stop growing. They can't stay, wait a month and it will be there. It will go to waste because they don't have the funds to pick it and donate it. Um, and it's, it's, it's a loss across the board. We are doing everything we can. We are following all the guidelines. We are a grocery store, although a unique one, we are a grocery store. And we should be, we are essential. And we need to support that if, if it's, and we're going to follow all the guidelines and we will work with everyone to make it as safe as we can. And we will be safer than the grocery stores that are in operation right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, now you understand why this is a difficult decision. Just the philosophy of discussion that we had right now is what makes this difficult. And we're not the first community to be having these discussions. There are communities, not only within Kansas, but all over the states, uh, having the same discussion. Because the farmer's market is a very huge component of their communities for all the reasons all of you just mentioned. And, um, but my take has been from the very beginning of this pandemic is to contain it. And that's been my only goal is to contain it. And if our numbers are low, that's great because people are doing exactly what they should be doing. And I want to keep, continue that process of doing the social distancing, which means not just within space between you and another person, but how many touch points? If I touched a, a bread, a loaf of bread and didn't purchase it and somebody else touched it, they have, they may get whatever I had, or I might get whatever they had, just from just that one, one loaf of bread or one tomato, whatever it might be. So it's about as many things as we touch, whether it's a doorknob, whether it's another, um, person's sleeve as we walk by, whatever it might be. Um, my goal is to incorporate social distancing in as many areas as we can so that everybody's healthy. Excuse me. We speak about the vulnerable coming out and, you know, people that are on SNAP and need these resources and food, the elderly that need, uh, food as well. But those are also the most vulnerable people for help. And those are the ones that may or may not have health insurance, may not, may or may not get tested because they're afraid if they get hospitalized, they can't pay their healthcare bill. Uh, the riskiest ones are also the ones that may not have, uh, great, um, health because of food choices they make, because of the limited, uh, resources that they have also. Uh, there are plenty of reasons. We can go back and forth on this. My goal is not to suspend the farmer's market. That has never been my goal. My goal has never been to see how many businesses can go under. I want a vibrant community once again. Uh, but I do feel we have community spread. Our, we're going to peak later in, uh, April, maybe early May. Um, we have, you know, a rate that is very low right now and we want to keep it that way. And I want us, I want us to control what we can. And in my position as well as yours, one of the things we control are permits. So I'd rather delay that permit than give it and say, oh my gosh, what's happening and revoke it, or not even think about revoking it. You know, we need, we don't have an enforcement piece anywhere. People tell me, all these people that are congregating, we can't go around sending RCPD. We don't have a fine. We don't have enforcement measures. That's why delaying the permit makes sense to me. So with all that said, like I said, this is a extremely difficult, every decision has been difficult during this process. There's nothing easy. But to me, I feel social distancing and making sure people are away from each other as often as possible is what's in the best interest for their health. Um, I can't control what Dillons or Walmart or anybody else does. Those are corporations. They have to figure that out. I, I also understand the essential component of this being food. So I would like to find a different mechanism to get food to the people that need it. Um, with that said, uh, if there is no further discussion, uh, we can have a vote on this.
Can I make another comment, Mayor?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I am in contact with multiple markets, not only in the state of Kansas, but across the nation. Um, and I have been in contact with some even in New York City and how they're working with theirs and making it work, um, even in high areas that have issues. So please don't feel that I am someone that's just stuck in Little Manhattan and not know what's going on. I am, I've been active in farmer's markets for many, many years and know, have contacts across the nation actually to help with this also and see what's working in other areas. And in regards to your points of the touch points, that's one reason we feel that we will be safer is because we will have a lot fewer touch points at the market, especially on food. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate it. Um, with, are there any other comments before we go for a motion and a vote? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we authorize, this is Win Butler, I'll make the motion, we authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Downtown Farmer's Market Incorporated for use of the city public parking lot at the southeast quadrant of North Fourth Street and Leavenworth Street, N Lot 3, Manhattan Town Center, 5, for the 2020 season, April 18th, 2020 to October 31st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
No.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
I would just like to state that I'm really disappointed that the city commission is overriding the county health director. I think it's important that all of our citizens take what the county health director says as an important, really important in our futures. Um, so having said that, uh, it, it, it passed and will live with it. I assume we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, with that, we'll go on to our original general agenda item. We're going to review and discuss the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Consolidated Plan for 2020 Annual Action Plan. Um, and the annual action plan. And Erica Tell will be our presenter this evening as well as Christina Lecure. I don't think I said that right, our grant administrator. There you go. So go ahead, Eric.
Okay. Hey, good evening. Um, I'm going to run through this presentation relatively quickly and then Christina and I will be available for questions. Um, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the virus and CDBG, and I'll talk about that towards the end of the presentation. Um, every five years, we do a consolidated plan and it's time to do the update of that. Um, so we're looking at the 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan. It's sort of an umbrella document. Um, every year we do an annual action plan. And so we're looking at the 2020 annual action plan. And then every five years, we also update the analysis of impetus to fair housing. So as you know, the, um, HUD administers the CDBG block grant program. And the national objective of that program is to provide safety and sanitary housing, suitable living environments, and to create or expand economic opportunities. Um, there's national goals as well to improve availability and accessibility to services, infrastructure, facilities and housing, provide affordability through maintenance or creation of housing, infrastructure and services, and to sustain livable and viable communities by providing, um, benefits to LMI neighborhoods and persons. Uh, Manhattan, as you know, became an entitlement community in 2010. That's when we exceeded 50,000. And so we now get funds directly from HUD annually through an allocation through Congress and HUD. And so we no longer have to compete on an annual basis for that allocation. And grant funds are allocated principally to serve low and moderate income households and neighborhoods. And so um, we have to, that's really the primary goal and, and thrust behind all of this. And you may ask, what is a, a low and moderate income household? Well, in, in the Manhattan MSA for 2019, which is the latest numbers, um, the, the median income is 83,800. As you can see on the slide here, different household sizes have different thresholds. So a, a household of four, um, if they own 63,000, uh, if they earn 63,500 or less a year, then they're considered 80% or less of the median family income and are therefore, um, low and moderate income. And this is the map from the census, um, so many census tracts. The pink areas are those tracts that are 51% or more of low and moderate income households. Um, just to give you some bearing, the, this is Tattle Creek Boulevard, Fort Riley Boulevard, Tethrow Road, Anderson Avenue, um, K-State Core Campus. So pretty much the whole, um, older part of town and the areas surrounding Anderson University are all in that LMI designation. Um, the entitlement status requires that we, um, complete the consolidated plan, which as I said, is more of an umbrella document. It consists of a number of other parts. One of those is the five-year strategic plan. And again, for this time around, we're looking at 2020 to 2024. That plan has the citizen participation plan as a subset, as the analysis of, um, impetus to fair housing as part of it. And then there are a bunch of other documents and forms that we have to submit as well. And then there's the 2020 annual action plan, which is included as the first year of the, of the five-year plan. So our five-year strategic plan is implemented over that five-year period and identifies needs, resources, priorities and goals. It identifies broad, broad project categories, which I'll get into here in a minute. And it's more general in nature. Some are specific strategic plan goals, and these are similar to previous, um, five-year plans, is sustainable, affordable housing opportunities, improve livability and safety of neighborhoods, support community facilities that improve quality of life for low and moderate income residents and neighborhoods. Um, support public services that meet the needs of the LMI people in our community and also the last ones, support activities that create and sustain quality jobs. So the five, um, broad categories that actually identify within our annual plans, the activities that we'll use that money for. Number one is, is the grant administration planning and fair housing. Those are obviously requirements of HUD. We have to do fair housing activities every year and brand administration. Christina is our grant administrator. She's basically our in-house expert on all things HUD. And she spends a hundred percent of her time um, following the different procedures and rules and reporting and monitoring that that requires of us and of our sub-sidians. Um, we run a housing rehabilitation program for low and moderate income homeowners. Um, it's not for rental property. It has the owner occupied. Um, we, last year we did 10, um, comprehensive rehabs, which means they're, um, up to $25,000 potentially. Um, we did one emergency rehab and we did one mobile home rehab. So it's an essential program to keep lower income people in their homes, um, keep homeownership alive and well, and to keep that existing affordable housing stock in a livable condition in our community. Um, third one obviously is the, our public service agencies, which are a very important component. We typically have been funding five agencies, HCCI, Kansas Legal Services, Ponte Minto Health, MCI and, um, Sunflower Cosm. Um, public facilities and neighborhood infrastructure, um, that can be anywhere from sidewalk gaps and ADA improvements to, to school crossings. to school crossings to doing the new kitchen for the senior center or the Douglas Recreation Center, as I know was originally going to be funded through Section 108, but we paid for all the design work for that project. And the last one is economic development, which we actually haven't used yet, but we still have it on the list. It must be for businesses owned by LMI persons or disadvantaged businesses and create jobs for LMI persons. Other requirements, again, of this process that we're going through now is looking at the citizen participation plan, which, as the name implies, is the procedures that we use for citizen engagement as we create and update these plans. It was last updated in 2018. HUD was wanting cities to update it to include emergency procedures if there's a declared federal disaster. Pandemics actually are part of that. Then the next item is the analysis from impediments to fair housing, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a later slide. Then again, we have the other forms and documents that have to be sent in. Annual action plan is done every year. It's essentially the budget document for each year. So once we get our allotment and our allocation announcement typically in March, then we finalize what that budget would be. And so we're looking at the 2020 program year that starts on July 1st and ends June of next year. This action plan is developed with input from our citizens, our social service agencies, and city departments. And it provides a summary of the actual activities that we'll be doing. And it shows how much funding will be assigned to each of those activities. This slide shows, just so you can see what our allocations have been over the last five years. As you can see, it varies and it's totally up to how much, just through the congressional budget cycle and HUD. And then they apply their formulas. We're a formula grantee, and so it's a combination of population and rental rates and median income and a number of different factors. And we, as you can see, this year, we got a little bit more than last year, 559,000. Examples of eligible activities, again, infrastructure improvements, ADA connectivity trail types of things, the public facilities, community centers, park improvements.
Eric?
Yes.
Could you go back one slide? I had myself on mute and couldn't hear. So, you know, in 2015, it was $600,000 and now, you know, it's reduced down to 500,000. Is there, or approximately a few thousand dollars off? Is that reduction just funding sources or why did that reduction happen? Do you know? I mean, in 2016, it was 660,000.
Well, again, it's all contingent on the congressional budget process and getting through that process. And then however much money HUD has, they distribute nationally according to their funding allocation formulas. And so cities like Manhattan, that is an entitlement city, there's a formula, you know, a mathematical formula that they run us through and that's what we get. The state of Kansas also gets money through another formula. And people that are not entitled, or cities and counties that are not entitled, compete annually for those funds. And we used to have to do that before 2010. So you never really know exactly how much you're going to get. I think the last two years, you know, just with tightening budgets at the federal level, that's reflected in our allocations.
Is that dependent on, excuse me, on population or income level or housing needs? Is that what the formula is part of?
All of those, all of those factors are part of the formula.
All right. Okay, thank you.
So we've kind of gone through this list in the earlier slides, but these are the types of things that can be addressed through that annual action plan. There is a limit, 15% limit on the public service activities. Although with the pandemic that we're under, HUD just announced today that they're lifting that 15% cap for the time of response to the pandemic. The last one again is administration of the program and our fair housing activities. And those are always limited to 20%. This is kind of a long list to look at on a slide, but it's, first items are the ones that we do every year. The list I wanted to show you are the types of things we've done in the past for the broader community, everything. From the Crisis Center and the Douglas Center and the Red Basket, Long's Park, the emergency shelter, various sidewalk and ADA ramp improvements. And ADA improvements automatically qualify anywhere in the city, even if it's not an LMI area, because ADA accessibility is an automatic eligible activity. We did the sidewalks and ramps around the public square, the senior center. We've done a lot of work over the years and did the commercial kitchen most recently. We do lots of pedestrian crossings, both at schools and other locations. And again, we did the design for the Douglas Recreation Center through our funding. And the old Blue River Trail was an important one. It was completed a year and a half ago. So the proposed annual action plan for 2020, and I understand this was done for the events of the last couple of weeks. And so this will most likely change. But what we have up on the website right now, and I didn't mention yet, we're under a 30-day public review and comment period that started on March 29th and will end in April. But the first one again is our program administration of fair housing activities. It's limited to 20%. The second one is our housing rehab program, which, again, we do a lot of emergency repairs, repair roofs, replace furnaces or fix plumbing or electrical issues, provide lead, asbestos, and radon abadements or mitigation and testing and ADA accessibility and that type of thing. The whole purpose of the program is, again, to keep low-income homeowners in their house and keep those housed as livable and part of our portable housing stock within the community. Again, our social service agencies, they submit an R F P every year and our social service advisory board weighs in on those proposals and helps prioritize the different agencies and gives recommendations to us as we finalize our action plan. And you know all the issues that they deal with, so I want to go through that. This year, we were originally going to relocate the cooler out of the parking lot of Douglas Centers, the cooler for the Red Basket, and that's to prepare for future parking lot improvements for the Douglas Recreation Center. And then the second one was going to be, this is the intersection, Leavenworth and Fifth Street, right at the post office and the public housing apartment towers. The north side of that intersection on both sides of the sidewalks are very narrow and there's some funny walls and ramps and things aren't good. And so we were going to do some street improvements there because Public Works was doing some water line replacement in that area as well. But with the virus coming up and trying to sweep some of these monies to use for a virus response, it looks like we probably will not be doing these last two items. Just quickly on the analysis of impediments to fair housing. Again, it's kind of a standalone document, but it's done every five years and updated. And so we're updating it and sending it in this time around. And it's, looks at issues within the community that might impede fair choice in housing. It examines markets, market conditions, cost burdens, complaints that the city has received over the years as both for renters and home buyers. It examines cities' policies and actions that are taken to promote fair housing and that provides goals and plans that the city has in place for fair housing and choice. So just to run through the overall process, we have updating these three documents. Again, the five-year consolidated plan, the annual action plan that we're putting together for 2020, and the analysis of impediments to fair housing. We started back last fall consulting with the public, holding a number of meetings. We had an online suggestion box on the website. And with social media, Facebook and Twitter, we got lots of input through all those different means. In December, we got the requests from the different social service agencies through the R F P process. January, the social service advisory board reviewed those and gave us recommendations and prioritization. Then February through now, we've been updating and rewriting these documents based on all that input. As I said, we're in the 30-day public review and comment period right now. There is the online comment box on the city website. Then we're all headed towards this May 5th. City Commission meeting is really when we need the commission to approve the plans and authorize us to send them into HUD. We have to get them to HUD no later than May 15th. I think that's Friday. We'd like to do it before that Friday. And that has a 45-day review period. And then our plan year starts on July 1st. So the virus, you know, Congress approved the stimulus package, COVID-19 stimulus package. We got the letter, which I think you saw today, from HUD notifying us that we'll get 328,976 in what's called C D B G 20 CARES. CARES stands for Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Recovery Act. We think we'll be getting that money in approximately 30 to 40 days. From everything I've been reading, this is, they're implying this is sort of the first installment. There could be more money coming later. I don't know if that'll be coming directly to the city or through other avenues. And I think Ron has talked about this to you before and the community's been talking about this. Some of the activities we can use this money for are different types of medical facilities for testing and treatment, leasing of motels or hotels to increase that capacity, off-site from the hospitals for people that don't need to be hospitalized, whether in quarantine or recovering, and also to address group living order issues. Depending on the timing of when we would receive this money, and from seeing some email announcements from HUD today, it looks like we'll probably end up amending our 2019 action plan and amending this proposed 2020 plan. They basically strongly urge us to continue on our path of approving our five-year consolidated plan and the 2020 action plan, and then going back and amending. They're thinking that if we try and change them now, it's actually going to delay the timing of all of our approvals. And the reason it's hard for me to give you some answers is HUD really has not figured out all their rules yet. As you saw in that one announcement today, they've changed their public comment period to no less than five days. They allow virtual public hearings now. They've changed that cap on public service agencies from 15%. They removed that cap, at least during this emergency. They'll allow us to use these funds to reimburse our costs for pandemic response, regardless of the date that the cost was incurred. So, and they're trying to create some what they call waivers on some of the process that we normally have to follow for our annual action plans and for amendments and that type of thing. So we don't know what all those waivers will be, but basically they're wanting to accelerate the whole process. If we add the money that we know we'll be getting up here with what we think we can take unencumbered funds from both our current 2019 plan year and our proposed annual plan, we think we'll have maybe around 522 to 531,000 that we could combine with this CARES Act money. So maybe we'll have somewhere around 850, 860,000 to address the issues that Ron has been talking about, the leasing of a hotel, maybe give the social service agencies more funding than that type of thing. So we know we're going to be amending our 2020 plan that I just showed you. We know that we will be reducing our administrative costs as much as we can. This pot of money pays for Christina. We definitely need Christina to continue working full-time on what she does. We still have to do the fair housing activities. Planning are things like paying for the concept designs for the Crisis Center, which we did this last year. We don't need to necessarily do any planning, so we know we'll be reducing that item. Housing rehab is an important program. As I've said, we don't want to discontinue that program if we can avoid it, but we will be reducing that. These are all just estimated numbers I'm showing here. Public service agencies, the 83,800 is what we have proposed. We know, we know that number will change. I don't know if it'll go up or down. We will try and shift money around, as I showed you on the previous slide. Maybe we can use some of this money swept from the two plan years and from the CARES Act to give more money to certain identified agencies. We sent an email out to the agencies today. HUD is saying, don't wait for their process rules to come out. Go ahead and start having your conversations in the community and create those local partnerships with public-private partnerships in the medical community as well as the state agencies. And so we started that today with some emails. And as I said, we're definitely, well, I assume Ron will agree, we're going to not be doing these last two projects. Most likely, we're going to take this 185,000 and sweep it into responding to the coronavirus. And with that, we're in the 30-day comment period. Again, it goes till April 28th. And we've got the online suggestion box. I could click on it here and it would show you up on the website, but I don't think we really need to do that, but it is up there. It has the address. If people click there, it opens up a link to all of these documents that we've been talking about and it's also an online comment form. So with that, Chris and I are available for any questions in my head.
Well, before I go on to Commissioner comments, I just have a couple of questions for you. You said you mentioned something about having a virtual hearing or a virtual meeting. Was that something you're considering doing during this process of?
Yeah, we're essentially doing that tonight through this discussion, but on May 5th, assuming that we're still doing virtual meetings. HUD has basically said you can do virtual public hearings. They don't have to be face-to-face public hearings anymore.
I was thinking more like a, for a public comment period if there would be virtual. My other question to you is the the contract with the hotel that Ron was speaking about earlier in the meeting from the discussions with the Manhattan Clinical Task Force, as well as with the Riley Health Department, Riley County Health Department. Can we utilize these funds before May 5th?
I think from the letter that you saw today and some, I think, yes. We can use this money to reimburse costs regardless of the date incurred. That's my interpretation of the letter that we got. But I think they're understanding that communities are, you know, wanting to start responding, not wanting to wait until the money arrives. And from my interpretation of this letter, they're saying that data local governments may reimburse costs for eligible activities incurred for pandemic response regardless of the date. Again, we don't know all the rules coming along with the money, but again, HUD is recognizing that we can't wait till we get the rules and we get the money. We need to start planning now and incurring costs.
This is Ron.
Thank you, Eric. I'll open it up for Commissioner comments on the agenda item.
I have a question, I have a couple of questions for you, Eric. The, this is Aaron, by the way. I, through C D B G funds, is there rapid rehousing available? Or is that not part of our consolidated plan, rapid rehousing funding? I saw homeless prevention, and I think that goes potentially through M I S I and other programs, but what about rapid rehousing? Is that addressed?
Right, and, and we, I'll let Chris also respond when I'm done, because she knows more specifics on this stuff. But we also apply, not, not through CDBG, but through the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation for emergency solution grant monies. And I know both MISA, MISA uses that for doing some of those kind of programs.
Okay.
Chris, do you have any additional comments?
It's probably not the right fund for that to come out of, the CDBG. I was just curious.
Right.
Another question, I guess if there is anything more on that, was going into the summer and going into the future, you mentioned this first installment potentially, that is, those outlined, those, those scenarios that were outlined and what the city seems to be discussing about a alternative care unit, it's very much health-oriented, very much because we're in the middle of the peak pandemic crisis. But as we've already seen forecast, the numbers of unemployment, the numbers of potential record-setting unemployment numbers, even across the state, in our region and nationally, that's going to impact community, this CDBG. And potentially, as we see more funds come in, there may be needs for things along those lines to expand some shelter or a cooling place during the summer, things that we don't currently have as a community. And there are, there's, there's resources that are in the community, but there isn't city-driven resources. So that's just something I wanted the other commissioners to think about, that this funding, COVID funding isn't, it is economic, it's going to be, it already has been, it's going to be in the long term. But I guess the last part of that question is, what type of coordination, collaboration do we have with the school district when they are saying they have 400-some homeless students? Now they're all not in school. Is that incorporated into our consolidated plan? I, I'm sure there's requirements to work with the stakeholders, them being one, but could you speak to that, Eric?
Yeah, let, Chris, are you there, Chris?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, okay. Can you respond to that?
So, right now, the, the school district follows the Health and Human Services definition of homeless. And it's not the same definition that HUD has. For Health and Human Services, they say you're homeless if you are staying in a place that you are not on the lease of, if the child is staying with someone who is not their relative or parent, legal guardian, and if you, as a home, as a family, are staying in a shelter somewhere. That's their definition of a homeless child. Currently, the, the school district, USD 383, has what they call the Families in Transition Program. And most of their homeless students are run through that program. And what they do is they basically arrange for those students to have shelter, either with friends, what they call couch surfing, or they match up families and one family stays with another. So currently, most of those, as far as I know, those people are, those kids are all sheltered somehow. Under the age of 18, they are not allowed in MISA shelter. But for youth that are between 18 and 24, MISA does have programs to help those individuals out. And, and other than that, I mean, I've reached out to the, to the school district, to Cheryl McCormick. She's the one who manages the Families in Transition, and she has not responded to anything that I've ever sent her. So I'm presuming that they're doing okay.
Well, and thank you for that. I, so McKinney-Vento Act is what the definition you're talking about. McKinney-Vento defines school districts as the use, and then HUD decided to make up their own different definition later. The family, the FIT closet, the Families in Transition Program, isn't necessarily, it's in collaboration with 383, but there should be a McKinney-Vento coordinator with the school that we, we should consider getting their input on our plan before it comes back to the commission.
Before we amend it, or?
I, I would just like to hear how, how they're involved in our consolidated plan when it, by the time it comes back to us in, what is it, May? Is that right?
May, yeah.
Yeah, so, that, and if there is no, if, if there's no coordination necessary, that is a fine answer for me, but I would assume that there is some need that we can, without duplicating services, that we, there may be an efficiency there, too. May make our plan stronger.
Possibly, but there's a, a specific document that, that Cheryl sent me a year or so ago about how that program works. And we, on one occasion many years ago, tried to work with them. And the issue that we ran into is that their timeline does not match up with the HUD timeline, because our grant year starts in July and their school year ends in May. So, they weren't, they had originally planned to use CDBG funding for one program, and they couldn't make it work for whatever reason. And since then, they have not elected to ask for CDBG funds. We do put out, we do put out the RFP to every social service agency I have a contact for, and I include the school district on that, and no one ever responds from the school district.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll be sure to tell them that you're gonna put them on the, on your shortlist of people that they need to return a call to. But the fact that we're in a transitional time, they're, they're a local government entity serving a huge portion of the people that are affected, at least from their definition of homelessness, makes it pretty important to me that they're included in this. And the fact that they aren't, the, the timeline of scheduling is obviously different, right? We're, we're, we're meeting virtually. We don't know when the school's gonna be coming back to a normal schedule. They're, they're asking similar questions about their future. So consolidating our effort to address the same population seems pretty, a pretty useful tool.
Yes.
Other Commissioner comments on this?
Linda, you're muted. Thank you. I would just like to say, Eric, that as you described all, so many of the projects that the Community Development Block Grant has paid for for the last 10 years, I was really impressed with those things that have added to the quality of life here, whether it's at the breadbasket, or the senior center, or sidewalks, or the Crisis Center, an HVAC, or any of those, is, is a tremendous assistance to them. So those are really important contributions that we have assisted in those, in those improvements. Something that I wondered about, and I, I don't, I didn't see it, and that doesn't mean it isn't there, but was, is, there's a lot of discussion at the National League of Cities and the League of Kansas Municipalities, and just in some of the newsletters we receive about broadband. So is there any opportunity for CDBG money to be used for broadband and to improve the level of connectivity of our community?
Well, broadband is something that we had to include this time around in the consolidated plan, and understand that our plan is for the city limits of Manhattan. In the city limits of Manhattan, there are no broadband issues that were identified through that process. So Chris, do you have any additional comment?
Do, does Riley County, are they eligible to apply for CDBG?
They are.
Or they just don't, or it, what?
Riley County can apply. They're not, as a county in whole, they're not LMI. They might have pockets of LMI, so they might have to do some surveys if they disagree with the census data. But they could apply to the State of Kansas through that competitive program if they chose, so choose.
Okay.
I think.
If you would go to that census map, and I think I talk with you each year about this, but I would like to mention it again, in case there's an opportunity to, that one, ever make a change. We're at the upper right-ish where it says 2.2. So the census district actually excludes 2.2?
No, the, what you're seeing on this map, first of all, the yellow line is the city limits.
City limits, right.
The, all the numbers, those two-digit numbers you see are different census tracts and block groups.
Okay.
The pink areas that are shaded are the ones that the census has identified are at least 51% or more of the population is below the 80% being an income.
Okay, and then the white, the clear area is less than 51%.
Right, and, and as you know, I mean, there are, this is Allen Road.
Right.
Lane here, and there are mobile home parks in the area, but there's, there's also new housing and Dix Edition and some other areas in that same block group area that the majority of that area is actually above that LMI threshold, and that's why that's not shown. That's also why up here, I mean, you know, we had all that new housing that was built after the 2005 RAC process, and it's all new housing. And so this area of Northview also is not identified as LMI. Now, I know one of your other questions was our housing rehab program. Our housing rehab program is anywhere in the city limits, as long as that homeowner qualifies, you know, that they are LMI, according to the number of people in their family and that they live in that house. So regardless of this map, our rehab program is fully citywide as long as they qualify.
Well, I, I just look at these, these two countryside mobile home courts here in Northview as a truly low-income area. And so they are, I mean, they, fortunately, they can be helped with this rehab money. But that, then the area, what is the pink area that's labeled 2.5?
That is Census Track number two, block group number five.
Yep.
And that is partly in the city and partly outside of the city.
But it is.
So you can see, this is Marlet Avenue right here.
Right.
And this is Gaysman Road, and this is Tattle Creek and Lard. And the city limits is this funny yellow line. So a lot of actually is farmland.
It's where the new 620-unit trails.
Yeah, that's, that's, right, that's right here.
Yeah.
And right beside that is that, I think it's called Halls Landing, which is in the county.
It's Nelson's Landing.
Okay, Nelson's Landing, which is in the county.
Which would be lower income. I, just so, you cannot target, I guess, the areas that need, need to be targeted. So, thank you. I appreciate you talking about that. Let me see. I remember that we applied for money for the Douglas Center to, for CDBG money that was not awarded. So which category was that? Or was that a completely separate deal?
That would have funded, sorry, go ahead, Eric.
Are you meaning the Section 108 loan?
I don't know. I'm talking about what would have funded Douglas Center. You know the technical name, I don't.
Yeah, it was a different program.
So if you were talking about the Douglas Recreation Center, that was CDBG funds. The Section 8, the Section 108 loan works whereby, basically, we take a loan out against our grant allocation for, and we repay it over 20 years from our grant allocation. It is actually a loan, it's not a grant, but everyone calls it a grant because you pay for it with grant funds.
Uh-huh.
The problem that happened there was not anything wrong with the project that we put up. The problem was with the State of Kansas Cash Basis Law, in which it says municipalities may not take out a loan unless they have the money on hand to pay it off. And as I recall, there wasn't a whole lot of willingness to set aside the amount of funds it would have taken to be able to pay it off at any given time.
Five million is a big bill. But if we had done that, we would have not been able to accomplish some of these smaller projects over the coming years, right?
That is most likely, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I just need to touch base occasionally.
Other comments? When? Mark?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with how we've been using the community block grant funds. I think they, they've been well-directed over the years. What I'm interested in is this additional money that's being put for 380-some thousand for the COVID-19. And, and it looks like we've got a bunch of money there, and we're struggling to figure out how to spend it. That's what it looks like to me. And I think we need a plan to say, okay, where's this gonna make the most sense? Now, I have no problem with the idea of the medical facilities. I think, you know, renting some hotel space is good for the hotels, and it's about 30,000 a month. You know, might go on for a couple of months, that's probably good. But I think, you know, one of the things that city and county's gonna have to do is figure out how to do massive testing, of these rapid tests. And there's, you know, from what I've researched, there's all different varieties of tests out there that makes it confusing. But is there any way to direct a good part of this funds to thinking long-term, you know, leasing or getting some testing locations, and getting the right rapid test equipment so we can figure out who's got this virus and who might have immunity to it, and then make it easier to trace it, and then that will get us all back into work? And I don't see that being discussed here. But, but I know that's a logistics issue, because, you know, they talk a good show at the federal level about all these tests, but we don't see them here. And, and so is there some way we can say, look, this is the test we want. We don't want five different ones, you know, consistency, one simple one that's rapid test, and try to channel this money to making that happen, so that we can take businesses, like just take the fire department, for instance. If we could get enough of those, we test everybody in the fire department, so they can get back to more business as usual. We do the same thing to public works, the health workers, the hospital, and then work on down the chain and target this money towards something like that, which would have massive impact on, on our ability to, to handle the virus. And I just don't see that being discussed.
So, Commissioner Butler, as part of this CDBG extra funding, we still have to conduct a consultation process for the extra funds? And so if you want that to be part of the conversation, we can definitely work it in?
Yeah, I, I think, unless it doesn't make sense to anybody, it seems to, you know, track. I think, I think everything really falls on the, the testing and who's, who's got the immunity if we're really talking about getting things back to some sort of, you know, normal operation. And I think that'd be a good use for those funds, you know? Taking off some for the, the medical facility thing, that's a good contingency plan, should we need it. I hope we don't.
So, this is Ron Fear, and there has been a little bit of discussion about that, Commissioner Butler. Certainly, as things improve and we get over the, the hump and are on the, the downswing with a declining amount of positive tests showing up on a regular basis, part of that is clearing people to be healthy enough to go back to work, so that people don't get reinfected. And so, right now, our, our, our problem with that is that there isn't enough test kits, as, as you've stipulated. And I think that's going to be somewhat dependent on our country and potentially other parts of the world to produce those. Obviously, we've heard a lot about some of the new tests, even two days ago, actually, I think it was, was yesterday. Secretary Norman talked about 45,000 of the new tests. 45,000 of the new tests that, you know the results in 45 minutes, being delivered to the state of Kansas. I think most of those are going to our hotspot areas around the state. But those are the kind of things that we'll need to test workers so that our businesses' employees can go back to work and people can reopen. So I think it is a key component of that. The other thing I'd like some comment on is just, right now, not just that money, but even though we're going to go ahead and as we go towards May 5th of finishing our plan for this year or this coming fiscal year, we need to keep, I think, an idea open about potentially reprioritizing some of those funds, and we may be fortunate to get some additional funds. But I do think there will be more need in the community for, depending on how long things string out, for potential other types of economic activity. Right now, there's not a lot of guidance from HUD. I think we'll continue to get guidance from HUD. And a lot of our National League of Cities and other folks that have a lot of influence over CDBG, I think we'll be able to inform and show a range of uses for how other cities are putting these extra funds into practice as well as reprioritizing their existing funds. So the only anomaly is that you have to amend or have a way to identify what that plan is and get it approved. And there's even language of, you know, appealing to HUD directly if it isn't in conformance or isn't specifically in conformance with what their written guidelines are. So there's ways to do that, it's just going to take a little bit longer. But for example, normally, this process is, we're having this 30-day period, they've indicated we can utilize the new funds in as little as a five-day hearing. So I think they are trying to make it somewhat flexible, and as we learn of what our needs are in the community, as we proceed towards May, we don't have to wait till May 5th. If we identify something specifically that we need to take care of, we can develop that plan and start public comment right away and bring you an item for your consideration. But comments about that as we move forward and whether or not there's agreement at least to potentially consider reprioritizing how we were going to use some of those 19 and 20 funds as originally indicated.
Yeah. So thanks, Ron, for the feedback. Mark, did you want to add any comments? Is Mark here?
Yeah. No, I don't really have anything to add.
Okay. So I think some of the conversation pieces, as far as the homelessness that Commissioner Esterbrook had alluded to and the population areas, as well as Commissioner Butler's idea about testing, I think when we focus on some of these monies, the public comment that was done previously before the pandemic, you know, is in front of us, would have been different because of the pandemic that's in front of us. I think the comments are going to reflect our current crisis. Using the money for the pandemic is extremely important, and looking at the hotels is just one piece of that. Testing, I don't know where private industry falls into this, and I don't know where it is public. One of the concerns I have every time I see the testing results is there's a higher percentage that's doing private as opposed to going through KDAG. That could be for a variety of reasons. But I'm sure insurance or paying or anything alike like that might be a factor. I heard that copayments and deductibles and such are waived at this point, but there might be people who don't have insurance, which might have the symptoms for the coronavirus, which may not be getting tested. So I don't know how we find that group out because they're used to going right into the emergency room, whereas this time they may just think it's the flu, they'll get over it. So that's a group that I would highly try to figure out how to tap that group so that if we can use these funds, that's the group that probably, you know, we should look at trying to get tested first in some of those areas. The other piece to this is the mental health piece. I know we used CDBG funds for Pawnee as well as, you know, the Riley Crisis Centers, Legal Services, the credit counseling. I think all of those pieces are also a big part of this pandemic. How do we put that into the stabilization center? I don't know what the numbers are currently. When I talk to Robin Cole, I haven't talked to her in a few days, but I think that's a piece where we can probably provide a little bit more support for families and individuals that are seeking assistance, as well as legal services and credit counseling services. I think those are big pieces of this as loss of jobs, as unemployment claims are going higher, and what can we do, how would CDBG play a role even in rent or mortgage? So those are three critical pieces where I would like for us to focus on is the credit services, legal counseling, and the mental health piece. Testing, of course, I think is extremely critical, but I don't know what that looks like since we haven't hit peak yet, and it's just kind of sporadic on who gets tested and who doesn't get tested and all of that. To me, I don't feel I have as much control over that as I do about these three areas. And these three areas often fall on your low and medium-income families, especially now that children are home for at least until August. And there's fewer resources and more needs. So if we can look at how to utilize these funds for those same type of families that are kind of crunched right now, I would like to see what that plan might look like. And even with the Flint Hills breadbasket, I don't know how they could use our funds currently. And I forgot the Crisis Center. The Crisis Center, Pawnee Mental Health, Legal Services, and Credit Counseling is where I would like to see us utilize more of those funds. This time around, at least for this year, maybe even next year, I'm not even thinking out to 2024, but at least in 2020 and 2021, we are in survival modes for these families. So I can't even think about redoing a sidewalk as we try to get people back on their feet. So I would like to see more of a plan towards that goal.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to, I'll answer one of your questions. You asked why KDAG wasn't doing more of the testing. And my brother is the health county, is the Barton County out of Great Bend County Health Director out there. And he was, told me that KDAG told him to stop sending tests because they were too backlog already, so that's why they were using private laboratories for some of the testing. But even that was, he was expecting a two- or three-day turnaround, and it was taking five or seven days. And so the number of testing supplies is way too low, and the process is way too slow. KDAG is overwhelmed, private labs, I'm not sure what the problem with, they're just overwhelmed a little too or something, but there's two parts of the testing problem, but they've got to get that figured out as soon as possible.
I agree. Five days is too long. By then, you're already, you probably, you know, should be isolated, and we don't know those things. So I agree. I don't have a solution for those, and I wish I did. There just seems to be a lot more, I don't know, there's just a lot more dealing with that. But within our community with these funds, I feel this is, at least my thought process goes towards those four elements that I relate to you.
Can I weigh in real quick? I, when I see this and this topic, CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, and I, and the increase in the HUD stimulus package, it's just a component of housing stability, the different types of projects. The medical facilities for testing is talking about facilities, it's not actually talking about the test. I don't want to, I don't disagree at all that we need faster testing, but I don't want us hopefully to get lost in the thought because the $2 or $3 trillion CARES package, which this is a slice of, is the first thing to get in front of us. But ADA is going to get $2 million for federal transportation, the health departments are going to get money, the federal community health is going to have money. Money for testing isn't going to come from your housing. So I don't know that we're, I think we're kind of talking about buying tests or helping pay for tests when this is really just about facilitating the actual structure so those tests can be made, is my understanding.
Well, HUD hasn't really given us all of the eligibility rules. This was taken out of their press release from last week on what they think the monies would be used for, and that's a changing environment. But you're right, there are other avenues that money would be coming to the community as well beyond just HUD.
I think the first step for them was to look at their entitlement communities and try and figure out a way that they could get funds directly to those larger cities to help with whatever that need was and try and reduce the bureaucracy process to get things happening quicker. I think I heard Eric say that either yesterday or today, they sent an email to all of the social service agencies to try and get some feedback from them on what some of their needs are. And I think the mayor was accurate in naming several that will certainly have their resources stretched from additional folks that might be calling on them for assistance. So I think that'll be an important factor. That's why I was very pleased to see that they were willing to lift that 15% cap.
Yes.
And if I may add, CDBG breaks things down into different categories of types of funding. What you see on the slide right here is facilities largely, but they do have a public service piece, and health services are included in that. So I imagine that testing would probably be eligible if we decided to also throw funds at that.
Right. Yeah, I think all options are on the table. I think you've heard some really good options this evening. See what flies, see what sticks. And I know there are phases of funding. I know they are discussing the fourth phase for the stimulus package funding for the pandemic. And they're going to, what Governor Kelly has alluded to is to look at the higher education piece of it because they've lost a lot of revenue with students having to not be on campus and such. So each one may have a different element, but there will never be a time where they're going to be waiving some restrictions and making sure you use it to get your community back in order. Because all of us are going through this in the nation, and they're trying to give as much leeway as possible in using these funds. I don't think anybody's going to be misusing any of these funds because we have great need in all sectors. But if we're trying to look at the most vulnerable and as they apply to the CGB, as we are used to thinking about CDBG, I think the conversation we've had this evening is very relevant and pertinent to the discussion, including the testing piece, the mental health piece, the counseling piece, and the legal services piece, and anything else that might come our way that we haven't discussed. Homelessness is huge. It's huge right now. I don't even know how you keep track of that. That would be something I would like for us to look into. You know, when I talk to the Emergency Manhattan, the Manhattan Emergency Shelter or the Crisis Center, these are individuals that want to be under the radar. So I don't have an accurate number. And now that school is, it's still in session but not on their USD 383 campus schools, you know, that looks different. So I don't know what homelessness today is going to look like. It's definitely going to be, just based on my instinct, it's going to be larger than normal. So how do we collect that number? And at the same time, we want them to also fill out that census form because this is going to impact our future funding. So if you don't have a residence, how do you also do all of those paperwork that we're talking about? Whereas broadband, this is the first time I keep hearing more people talk about bandwidth than I ever have. So, you know, these are terms that are coming our way that we need to figure out. But as far as for the CDBG, I think we, at least I feel we gave you some direction and certainly open to more direction from the public as well as the commissioners.
I think we, I should add also that I think we have to continue to fund those, that 15% of social services that we have been, and if we're able to increase that, Ron, then that's great. But I don't want to stop the funding. Those social services are going to be so critical here in the next two and three months that we're going to be testing all of our systems, putting a lot of stress on every social service and every government unit we have. So thank you, that's it.
I agree, and I think after a couple months of this online meetings from everybody that's doing it, we'll be able to identify where we have some gaps in our system. I know there's been a part of the community yesterday that lost its service, so I'm not sure what caused that outage, but I think we will be able to see where there might be some gaps even within the community.
Ron, I do have a question on this slide that's showing at number, the second one. With regard to the 328,000, it really just lists three possibilities. Are there other possibilities and you just list three? Or is, are these the three, the only three?
No, there's multiple possibilities, and as Eric said, there'll be more information provided to us. These were just three that were highlighting areas where we knew we had some potential interest.
Sure.
But their press release covered a lot more, and so we think we'll get additional guidance. And even their press release said that, you know, if we have something that's not on here, ask us.
Okay. Well, this is our, this is our one opportunity, and the next time we see it, it will be, the city administration will have made the adjustments. So I just wanted to be sure that we weigh in with regard to those areas that we think are important. Thank you.
And I just, you know, that's why, you know, I had mentioned, I would like to see some of this money invested in a long-term outlook instead of, you know, I know we've got some immediate issues, but the long-term outlook is how do you get from where we are back to where we want to be? And that means, you know, I understand the insurance thing the mayor brought up, but there's also labs in town that could do the testing. I don't know what the university can do. You know, there's capabilities here, and the health folks need to look at that and say, okay, let's prioritize this money where it's going to give us the greatest bang for the entire community. And I'm convinced, based on everything I've read and what everyone's saying, is that means doing something about having lab capabilities, you know, rapid tests, drive-throughs, don't build medical facilities for testing, but use what we've got here now for testing. Various, you know, Walgreens or whatever, that may mean, you know, leasing instead of building. And there's people smarter than me on the medical details of that, but I'd like that intent to at least be looked at real hard before we come up with a final plan.
Yeah. No, I agree with you, When. I think the problem that I'm seeing from everything I'm hearing from all of the meetings, the press conferences that the governor and Dr. Norman and all of them are having, as well as at the federal level, they talk about swabs, they talk about lack of test kits, they talk about, you know, Mark just brought out how long it takes to get them. And I think K-State has been trying to work with something, getting a little bit, done a little bit faster, but there were also some barriers and that. So there's this whole control issue that we are unable to understand the actual authority figures that make these decisions happen. But I would, I would, you know, I think we do need to be part of that conversation. But I also feel like we haven't, they blocked so many areas for it even coming to Manhattan that even if they get all of those thousands of test kits, they're putting it mostly in those hotspots. And I don't know what the paperwork that needs to be required. And by then, pandemic might be over anyway. I don't know.
Yeah, see, and I'm looking again, 30, 40 days to get the money, probably going to keep everything locked up until the end of April. So, you know, I would envision having some plan in May to make that happen. At least let's be optimistic and shoot for it, and hopefully industry will, you know, produce this stuff like the federal government's trying to tell us, and focus on what we want and, you know, make our voice heard. Say, this is what we want to do, this is our plan. You've given us the money, now give us some other resources, and, you know, we can use whatever local capability we have.
I think that's, that's good feedback. We appreciate it.
We might think about that word, and item number two appears twice, the word is construct. So we might need to say, develop medical facilities for testing, or develop, or some other word besides, because, When, you know, we really aren't interested in developing, constructing a long-term solution. We just need it for the duration of this virus. We just need it for the duration of this virus. So anyway, that's another thought.
Yeah, we just took those right off of their release. So I, I'm sure we can lease or, you know, other aspect, because they're going to provide money to construct things, they would likely provide money to lease things.
Good. Thank you.
I do think it's a conversation you need to probably have with the EOC group as well as the Manhattan Clinical Task Force and Robyn Cole and the legal agencies that I've mentioned to see exactly. Because the things we're talking about right now as far as test kits and such, these are things we're hearing so constantly that they're embedded in our head. But there are lots of needs that are happening in the background that we can't really feel because all of us are in our homes. But there's people struggling and they're calling people. And, you know, those phone lines are getting stuck, whether it's with unemployment claims, mental health needs, you know, all of these things, a legal counsel, a lot of lawyers, a lot of attorneys, all of these things. So look at some of those factors. We probably gave you more information than you were looking for, but if we can utilize this money and any one of these plans, I would be, I think is great for our community. All of these are great ideas that we've just discussed this evening. And it will, you know, and that's what they want us to use the money for. That's why they gave us so much broad width to work with on this. Any other comments from our commissioners or city staff?
Well, just to recap, again, what we're doing tonight, barring the pandemic, is reviewing that five-year plan and the 2020 action plan. And HUD is really encouraging the city to go ahead and complete that process, knowing that we're going to have to come back and amend probably our current 2019 action plan as well as the 2020 action plan. We'll be really need to keep to that, the May 5 meeting and then get it sent in for May 15th to HUD, knowing that we're going to come back and do an amendment, but they just don't have the details of how they want to do the amendments yet. And they, we're worried that if we, we in other cities hold up our regular process for the consolidated plan, that it's going to end up delaying things even further. And they recommended waiting and amending our 2019 and 2020 after we get this person through the process.
Okay. Yeah.
And we'll be, as Wen's been saying, we will be writing a plan specifically for this CARES money. And that's, I think, where that five-day review can come in as well.
Yeah. You know, when I looked at the strategic plan and everything that was put in front of us, I like what we've been doing. I like that we've been very aware of our community needs and the public has put in applications as they should, whether it's with the houses or with the infrastructure deals, like we said, sidewalks and such. And we're doing a housing study and that's going to give us more information about our needs. Rental properties and in our low and high income, sorry, lower and medium income families and the needs that need to be met there. But this year is going to set the tone for the next four or five years. And we just need to see how we're going to come out of this. And that's going to, like I said, set the tone. If people are used to now moving to other areas in Kansas or leaving Kansas, or more people are used to working remotely and they feel like they really don't need a structure of some kind, or I don't know how this looks, you know, this, what's happening today is going to change the future. And I like our plan that you've given us this evening as far as the ideas and the goals set forth. And with all the agencies that we work with, I mean, there are so many agencies that have reaped the rewards of CDBG funds and we want to continue that. But I, yeah, I think that's a discussion we need to continue to have in May even.
I had a
Go ahead.
Couple of comments. The, real quick to, I'm encouraged about the discussion about the testing, but I also want to separate that from my, at least it is separate from me and what we're talking about with this extra stimulus money that would be coming for this. Their stimulus money, a billion was earmarked to the national disaster medical system for testing. That's going to come through different ways. So I wouldn't want to use this unless we're not, unless we're positive, even if it's possible to get it another way. So that just kind of brings me back to what we talked about earlier, the long-term effect. We already have over 70,000 people across the state who have applied for unemployment. That directly impacts your housing. That directly impacts your community development. The long term of this pandemic, the crisis, rather than shooting in money into testing that can't be used for housing later, is something I would be very reluctant to do. I understand the need to lease a facility. That makes sense to me. But, and just going forward, I hope that we can learn more. I know this isn't the grant, but it's this, it's kind of the cousin of the HOME funds, which is actually a good amount of money that I would like to see us also have a discussion about going forward. And as you mentioned, that housing study will be important, but also we had begun discussing potentially a housing advisory board, which is something that needs to be vetted and flushed out more as we get through this crisis. There's other avenues to stabilize housing that we're not fully tapping into and we're going to need to over the next two years.
I'm just going to add a little bit to that discussion, Aaron. There is a lot of money allotted to testing, but I think this is one of those things where we are very low on that ladder because we are Manhattan, Kansas. And there's a lot of, already a lot of individuals that are asymptomatic, that are carriers. I know a couple of people that want to get tested because they feel they came in contact with somebody that had it, but they're not eligible because the requirements are so high about having a fever and having this, this, and this. I think to be preemptive is where I'm looking at as far as testing. We're not going, and I hope, I hope we are doing everything so well and that's why our numbers are so low. But it's not because we don't have carriers in our community. And unless they figure that out, they can't self-isolate. When you can't self-isolate, you're spreading it even more. So those are some of the reasons I would strong advocate for seeing how we can test a little bit more. In the state of Kansas, it's going to go to Johnson County, Shawnee, Sedgwick County, and Wyandotte. Manhattan's not going to be on that radar. And I want to think because we're doing all the right things. But I also think that's naive because a lot of people can't even get tested when they want to get tested. And so I think that's something we should look at. Otherwise, if we open everything up, that's the fear, is that it'll come back again because nobody knows who has it. So that's just part of the discussion. But I do think the other components to the housing piece is a big part of what CDBG funds are allotted to and continue to be discussed at the same time.
Aaron, and I agree, we don't want to, we don't want to use these funds if another source is available for testing funds. And so I'd expect staff, when you look at that, to make sense. If somebody's going to give you a pile of money just for testing, then obviously we don't need to use this. But my assumption was that wasn't going to happen. And so there were a lot of moving parts here and of course, that's the challenge. But what the intent is, you know, top on my priority list is solve this testing issue. And that makes everything else go smoother for everything else we're trying to do.
Just final comment, again, the online comment form on the city website at this address. And the public can download all these documents and they can comment through this online form. Or they can email Chris at this address down here.
Are we publicizing this? Is it on our social media piece? Are we putting it on the, in the mercury or on saying it on K-Man or something so people know?
Right. Yes, all of that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing no more discussion, is there anything else to discuss? Otherwise, I'm going to be adjourning the meeting. Okay, that's it for this evening. Ron, do we have a meeting next week?
We do not. The next scheduled meeting would be the 21st and we will
The next scheduled one, okay. April 21st.
Unless situations dictate otherwise for a special meeting, but right now that would be the next planned meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Well, thank you everyone for joining us this evening. The meeting is adjourned.